Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's Work Session for June 5th, 2023. If you would please stand for the invocation in the Sledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, we do thank you for this day, for your Son Jesus Christ, for the school system, the staff, the students, and the community. We ask your continued blessings as summer is out, protect these students, encourage their enrichment and literacy, and bless us continuously. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is our recognition. And our retirees have left, haven't they? This evening, we recognized our retirees for the system. We just want to tell them thank you for their years of service. We appreciate everything they've done for us, and we're going to miss them. Ms. Lane's here. Sorry, you're not going anywhere. Okay, item number four is Citizens Address the Board. Have a few that have signed in. And let's see, we will start with Ms. Gillard. Is that correct?
Yes.
Come on up. You want to make your way up. You want to go last? You want to wait? Okay. Well, LaShonda. You didn't want to go first either. And just as you're making your way up, I've just, a little housekeeping rules, and everybody thinks familiar with it, but we ask you do not name students, staff members, no one by name. You can say he or she. And we'll have three minutes on the clock. Mr. Boone will manage that for us, and go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. My name is LaShonda Mangram, and I am here, I would like to address the basketball coach, the issue. I'm standing in the gap for my son. My son has, he will be a senior this year, and it has been an inconsistency with coaches. He's had a different coach every year, and I'm just trying to figure out why. What happened with the coach, the coach that we did have? Why is he leaving? Why have certain decisions have been allowed to be made, and you guys weren't aware of it? It's just the inconsistency, the lack thereof. I believe that the coach that we had, he laid a great foundation. They were mentor programs, they were, they did mentor programs, they did community service, and they went to summer camps, and they were growing. They even did state playoffs. So I'm just trying to figure out where was the disconnection to where he had to be let go, or sent away, or however the situation happened. Another thing with that, with the, they also did a lot of fundraisers this year. So how does the money go with the band booster as well? If we were, if the, if the basketball team raises the money and it goes into the band booster, does the basketball team keep the money, or does it go to all the sports? Because for me, I feel like the football team, they're getting the LED lights, they're getting the speakers, but during the basketball season, it's cold in the gym. I've been cold all season long. I had to bring him a little blanket and layer up, and I'm trying to figure out what's going on. So with that being said, how is it going to go for summer basketball sports with McIntosh? Are they going to be allowed to go to summer camps? My son, being a senior, his dreams and aspirations are to go to college and further his basketball career. So is that going to happen? Are we going to get a new coach to start from the bottom? Are we going to get an old coach like we had the year before? What's going on? So that's just my questions and concerns. Once again, we're just, I'm trying to be part of the solution, not a problem. So what can we do as a community to help and watch our children, to help our children grow? That being said, I dismiss myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Palmer?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Alvin Palmer. I'm not a parent or anything, I'm just a concerned citizen in the community. I worked with a lot of kids in the area for a couple of years now, and I just, there's just a lot of questions need to be answered from the board's perspective, the school's perspective, about coaching, teaching, people in positions that making these decisions for these kids. We're losing a lot of kids to other areas of the schools because of the inconsistencies, like Shonda said, about coaching and mentoring and people being in their lives, helping them make decisions to further their education. My issue is with so many people holding multiple positions, like without saying, I guess, names, like the athletic director also being your head football coach. Like those two things don't go hand in hand, because the other sports are going to feel like they're being left out by the athletic director also being the head coach of your football program. Like those two should be two different, two different people holding those positions, because either, either way, you're going to look biased by making your decisions for your football team and for other areas of the sports. Them being a big drop off from your football program to your other sports, and the kids are noticing it more than anything right now. The parents are just falling in line because they see it more and more. But when I played at McIntosh, we had four football coaches in four years. You had a different one every year. Kids start to fall off, they start to lose their hopes and dreams of becoming whatever they want to be in life. So that's my biggest deal, is your athletic director and your football coach being the same person. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Reverend Timmons.
Evening.
Good evening.
Evening. All right, well, you all know when I come, you know, it's because there's a grave concern within the community of the things that are happening. You know, I'm a supporter of our school, I'm supportive of our kids, I'm supportive of our parents. And so when I, when I received the call that there was some, some, some problems with staffing, you know, and our kids having the issue of a revolving door, not just with our teachers, but also, you know, we've had several school superintendents, you know, within the past few years. And all of that leads to, as Mr. Palmer stated, our kids are being lost to the island, lost to Brunswick, lost to Liberty County. So I need us to really begin to focus, and, and if there's some support that the board needs from us, please reach out to us as, you know, the members that's going to support you, the community members. We want to support you, you know, but we all want to make sure that we're able to see you, let us know what's going on, so that we can be here to participate and that these things don't happen. You know, with the, with the coach situation, understanding that he wanted to stay, but he wasn't allowed to. So that's a problem. That's an issue. He did great, had a great season, there was no discrepancy, no problems that happened while he was at the school, from my understanding. So why is it that we have a coach that is having a positive impact, being able to say, okay, we're going to show you the door? For what reason? For what reason? From my understanding, there was a question about being moved to another position and was told you couldn't have that position. So we need to find out, or really need some, to see some policies and procedures of who makes these decisions, you know, and if we are parents and we are community members, we should be the ones to be able to say, okay, if there's nothing that happened that put kids in harm way, but this is somebody that has been really working to help build our children up. Not everybody wants to play football. You know, not everybody wants to play basketball. Some kids want to play baseball, soccer, all of these different things, you know, and I, I've got 30 seconds, so I'm going to leave it at this. I've had two students, former students of MCA. There was one, she came, she put in the position, she was well qualified, and I was excited to see her. When she came, she said, well, they just, they didn't, you know, give me the position they gave it to someone else. We lost her to Brunswick. We really need to begin to, as when I was coming up, and I'm pretty sure that Mr. McIver, I'm pretty sure you can expand as well, we had people in our community that taught our kids, and that made a big impression on us, because we knew that they could call mama. And they cared about us. And I know my time is up, can I sign another paper?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
LaShonda Gilliard. I'm a graduate of McIntosh County Academy. I've lived other places, I went to school in Boston as well, then I came back to Georgia, because that's where my mom's from. But anyway, I know you've seen me before, I am highly passionate, beyond passionate. That's why my son excels, especially with his grades, because grades top notch. The conversation is, if you excel in your grades, you could do any sport. I don't care what it is. He doesn't ask me for help, he makes it happen, so I thank God for that. But at the same time, I am passionate about mentorship. Ms. Gregory is just retiring, as long with another one. She has impacted my life. I had a dance scholarship, she was one of my dance overseers when I was in school. But the effect from '21 to '22 on a coach we had previously, we absolutely did not one fundraiser, there was no mentorship, there was even about to be a brawl at a basketball game with our own teammates on our team, and there was no interaction where our coaches stopped it. Okay? This coach now, he gives all the mentorship. All the mentorship, even giving back to the community. I have had older couple come to me and say how grateful they were to see that. This lady stopped and seen the car wash, she was like, I, my kids are grown, I am just so grateful to see these young men doing that. Last year, we, year before, we didn't have that at all. Not one t-shirt, nothing. There are kids, you don't know what a sport can do, and it's not just about sports, but you don't know. The sports help. It helps you become a mature person, it helps you be a teammate to your teammate, and as well as being respectful to adults, because we're raising them to be adults, right? So when I see, when I got the news, I was distraught. I'm trying to hold myself, I was distraught, because I couldn't understand. Help me understand, we were just in a booster meeting, and this came out of nowhere? Help me understand. I need the understanding, so I can help my child and someone else's child, because all parents can't make it to a game. I'm that parent that's there patting them on the back, telling them they've done a great job. Don't give up. To the point to where somebody shy gets up and give me a hug out of nowhere, and to where the parent said, they have never done that to anybody else. I'm about impact, leaving a legacy. I teach my son, whoever taught you, Mr. Palmer has helped him, you don't ever forget who helped you. To this day, he knows all his moves. Decisions, any discrepancies? But that's how we all interact with each other, because it's the community. It's just not about school, it's not about the neighbor, it's the community as a whole.
Thank you. Okay, and normally, whenever we have visitors come in and speak, we will check into this, and just as you said, you were as shocked and surprised, the board was, we just got the news as well. And this is our first meeting of the month where we will talk about any personnel that's leaving or resigning. So we just got the news ourselves. We, y'all have more details than we do about the situation. We, you know, I talked to Ms. Mangram a few minutes ago, and some of the things that she told me completely floored me, because we did not know that. So we will go into our executive session tonight and discuss personnel, and everyone has a phone number, and you will be getting a call back from our superintendent on this, and hopefully we can get to the bottom of it. And I do appreciate every one of you.
One other thing, if it's possible, when you do get the call back from the superintendent, the superintendent, could you have a meeting?
I feel quite sure, I don't want to speak for her, but I feel quite sure that she will, she would sit down and talk with you. She's, I think she will. Okay, and thank y'all again.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we'll carry on with our agenda. Item number five is approval of our work session agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. All right, item six is our items of information. I'll turn it over to Ms. Gramassa.
All right, start off with goal area one, student success. The 2023 summer school dates are, have been set. It's by invitation, so all the students and parents have been contacted about who will be going to summer school. The dates are varying, if you check the website, you'll be able to see exactly when they are for each of the grades, from Todd Grant, the middle school, and the academy. We're going to have a great summer school session, and preparing for possible remediation of classes to move on to the next grade, and then also preparing for a retake of the state assessment. So we're excited about summer school, and we have a solid plan. The graduation rate for the class of 2023, I'm really, really excited about the graduation rate. We're looking at a 97% graduation rate. We had one student that came in right at the nick of the time and was able to walk across that stage, and we're so proud of all of our graduates. We had such a wonderful graduation, the weather was beautiful, and it was an event to be looked upon with great esteem. All right, so that graduation, that's the June 2nd graduation was off the chain. I really enjoyed it. Goal area two, organizational effectiveness. We'll let Ms. Franklin talk a little bit about the public hearing for our FY24 budget.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, so our total budget comes to $22,876,200. And this consists of, that first column is your general fund of $18,488,166. The special program fund is your school nutrition, and that is just over a million. And then we still have SO3, we've got $1,100 budgeted for the SO3 fund, and then our local projects funds, we have $2,257,000 budgeted for the projects fund for next year. I would like to point out that the general fund this year, we are, we did have an increase of about 20%. A lot of that is, a lot of it was mandated or, and/or has funding that goes along with it. For example, we had the $2,000 increase to the certified salary scale, and along with the 5% increase for the non-certified staff. And we also have school buses, we had $528,000 for school buses this year, but that again is matched by state funding. We also had $795,000 was the impact of the state health increase for our certified and non-certified staff for next year. And $150,000 is for the upgrade to the security alert system. Again, that's going to be funded by the state as well. And we moved $760,000 of what was prior year SO funds back into the general fund for next year.
Okay. Any questions? One just second. At this time, I'll open it up for our public hearing for any questions anyone may have. Okay?
All right, I think we've put together a solid budget for next year that's going to be physically responsible and move our system forward academically, for sure. So we have item two, GSBA property and casualty insurance for McIntosh County Schools renewal. We are up for renewal, and in your packet, you'll see the full renewal policy, and you'll notice that there is a slight increase, about 16% to be totally transparent on that. And the reason is, is that the insurance market is taking a hit due to the cost of replacement values. To replace a building last year costs a lot less than it costs to replace a building this year, and it's being reflected on our insurance premiums. So knowing that we're getting off of, coming off of three major hurricanes in the last eight years, and the cost of materials going up, it was an adjustment that had to be made to continue on. Just a reminder that we recently put a bid out for new insurance, and they are our best company, and I think that we're, we're smart by sticking with them. So it says not to exceed $254,093. School board training, in your packet, you'll see some information about your upcoming GSBA Summer Conference in Savannah on June 8th through the 10th. Some good news, I'd like to let Ms. Franklin talk a little bit about two healthy transfers. Ms. Franklin, if you'll talk about number four and number five, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so number four, the transfer of a million dollars from the South Coast Money Market account into the local projects, that will, that is partial funding for our local projects for next year. And also a transfer of a million dollars from the general operating account into the local projects account, and those two transfers will give us the fund balance to fund our projects for next year. And just to point out, that million dollars is returning the $500,000 that was put into the general fund earlier this year, and then we have the budgeted $500,000 to move out, so that's a total, that totals to a million dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Number six, discussion of the purchase of Hatterby Phonics. You know, the McIntosh County school system is always trying to make sure that we are on the cutting edge of the reading instruction. Phonics and Whole Word, there's been so many waves and pendulons of swinging of how to teach reading, but as we move forward, we're going to be really delving into the phonics area, making sure that we continue with a solid phonics program. And this purchase will help us facilitate that, that move. Teachers will be trained in how to use the phonics and be really abreast of the latest research on that. Ms. Cheats, can you tell us a little bit about the phonics program that we're picking?
Well, basically, with Georgia House Bill 538, we have to have high-quality instructional materials, you know, and so specifically, they need to be aligned to the science of reading. And so this program, Hatterby, is directly aligned to that, and it's really aligned to the letters program that our teachers are being trained in. There needs to be, there has to be a certain sequence in which phonics is, you know, outlined and things like that, and it follows that sequence. And it also includes phonetic awareness, which is a big piece that, that our current curriculum is missing. So it hits all of those things, even in the dyslexia bill, the specific things that, that we need to target, encoding, decoding, all those things, the program includes all of that.
What grade levels this is?
So it's for kindergarten through second grade.
Kindergarten through second grade level, it's the most critical time. After third grade, you're learning, you're reading to learn, before that, you're learning to read. So we got to make sure that we're, we're hitting all the major points in reading, and I think this will help us out. Number six, discussion of the purchase, or number seven, discussion of the purchase of Eureka Math for Todd Grant Elementary, not to exceed $34,892. This is going to be our, I believe, our fifth year of Eureka Math, and we've progressively rolled it up. We didn't just say, here's a math program, and it's for all grade levels. Each year, we've added a grade level, and at this point, we'll be having all of the students be able to go through a math program from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade, and this is a yearly subscription to that. That's Eureka Math, it's standards-based, it's challenging, and I think that it should be a great continuation of what we're doing. Ms. Cheats, do you have anything more to say about the Eureka Math?
We're actually looking at Eureka Math Squared, which is a newer version of Eureka, and so it's the same budgeted amount that we had budgeted last year, but it is a little less than what we actually paid last year. But it's better aligned to our, to our new standards, and the pacing is better, where the teachers can actually get through with the lessons, and there are digital assessments, so there's lots. Actually, our fifth grade teachers did use Eureka Squared, and they really liked it. So there, the other teachers were excited about having it. Anyway, it'll be good, it'll be good for our new standards. But it's basically the same program, it's just a little easier to use and better aligned with the new maximums.
And this will be the Eureka until they come out with a new one?
Well, I mean, yes, the old Eureka, I think is, I think it must have been good eight years.
Okay, okay.
So, and like I said, it's really not that big of a price difference, I was excited for it, you know, new shun things.
Okay.
What's really exciting, though, is that we will have a math program that is from the beginning to fifth grade, the same sequence, the same flow, and I believe after we see a student that has been through the Eureka program for the full five years, and we get a class, we'll be able to say how effective the program is at the end. After they've been through five years of it, they should be able to produce on the state assessment. All right. Number eight, discussion of the May 2023 financial reports, Ms. Franklin?
Okay, page one, the general operating account. Page two, I'm sorry, May 31st, 2023, we began the month with $3.3 million. We had total receipts of $1.45 million, and dispersments of $1.49 million, leaving us with a balance of $3.2 million in general operating accounts. Onto revenues, page 25, I just want to point out tax revenues, we currently are at 92% of the current levy has been collected. But we are at 111% of our budgeted, so good news there. Page 26, total revenues through the end of May is $15.8 million, which is 98.7% of our total budgeted revenues of $6 million. And expenditures, page 28, we, through May, we have expended $11.7 million in the general fund, which is 75.7% of our budgeted $15.45 million. And fund, fund balance, page 33, the general fund, fund balance at May 31 is $6.7 million. No questions on that, we shall move on to school nutrition, page 108. School nutrition account is, is at $397,673. And the fund balance, page 116, for the school nutrition program, is $329,095. On to page 120 is our local projects. We current, we began the month with $1.19 million, and we had dispersments of $709,000, leaving us with a balance of $488,000 in the local projects account. Money market account, page 123, we currently have just over $4 million, we will be transferring a billion out in June. And the Georgia One Fund, on page 125, we began the month with $2.45 million. Yes, that number is correct, we have $10,475 in interest for the month, and we have these loss receipts of $162,280, leaving us with a balance of $2.16 in the Georgia Fund One account. And that, this loss receipt for May was an increase from the same time period last year of 6.8%. So our corrections are still looking pretty good. Are there any questions?
Our next item is the discussion from our previous meeting minutes. If you would take a chance to read over all of those, and if there are any questions or concerns, let Ms. Lane know, and she'll get them straightened out before our next meeting. All right, Mr. Gramassa, facilities?
So, under Facilities and Operations, A, Syntejic Security System Renewal for five years, not to exceed $133,950. As required by state law, that each system has to have a system in place that will notify the staff and appropriate personnel exactly when there's a lockdown, a real, true alert system. And we've been with Syntejic's for a while, and we did our due diligence and went out and looked at some other companies. However, we've decided to stick with Syntejic's. They've got some critical upgrades that I think will be got some critical upgrades that I think will be really good for our system, and I think we'll keep moving with the equipment we have and some upgraded equipment, and meet the letter of the law, and still, I believe, have a good product. Mr. Brunner, if you'll tell us just a little bit about some of the extra features that Syntejix is getting for the renewal cost and what we're getting?
So this is, you know, purchased through the security grant from the senior reference earlier, so it will not be a cost directly for the district at all, full funding will be done by the state. We are gaining some additional features, a mapping feature, visitor management as well, so when someone comes into our store, we'll be able to give them a badge that will track them through the buildings and show them on a map, so they'll know where all of our visitors are while they're in our buildings, and some additional call-out features for nine-one if there isn't anything, or things like that, but it is a, it is an upgrade to the system.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. B, Rule Technology Grant, I'm really excited about the hard work that our staff puts into reach out and apply for these grants, it's money out there, but just know that even when you get a grant, there's a lot of hoops that you have to jump through to get it and then to keep it and document it, there's a lot that goes on. So us getting this, this doesn't come without any strings, and Mr. Brunner, I appreciate you going the extra mile and applying for that, can you tell us a little bit about the Rule Technology Grant?
I don't want to talk this up a couple months ago, we were awarded a $100,000 grant for putting these two replacements off the computer labs in the middle school and high school, upgrading the A U lab to a little bit nicer machines at the high school as well, for testing computers that were already in all the replacement classes with this, which I definitely count as a win for us, and this is asking you guys to approve the budget on that next week, if you would, so we can go ahead and start purchasing computers for the summer, have them installed before school starts. We are looking at approximately, approximately $26,000 for the high-performance lab at the high school, $58,000 between the two labs at the middle school and the high school, and there's some additional document cameras and classroom software in that budget as well. Ms. Noble is looking, we're waiting for the, the finished quote to come in off the state contract, and then they're going to actually get the, you know, down to the state, and then the lifeblood equipment off of that, if you got some of the budget on that. Do you have any questions for me?
And this is all from, from the grant, will be funded fully by the grant?
Great job, Mr. Brunner.
Mr. Moss, can I piggyback off of that? Where, where are we with the sound system? I guess what I want to ask is, the sound system in the gym not working?
We've done a systematic upgrade to all the gyms, and we're at MCA, and here's the situation with MCA, that we've had a sound study done on that, and the cost of what they wanted to do for MCA, because of the way that gym is and all the concrete and the high walls, that at that, at the point of doing the sound study, the cost was exponentially great, that, that the acoustics in that gym makes it very, very difficult to put a system in that's going to be crystal clear. We've looked into it, we've got some ideas, and that's on our list, but we've taken care of the elementary school gym, we've taken care of the middle school gym, and systematically next will be, the auditorium is our, our next priority, and then the gym for that. But we've gotten two beautiful portable sound systems that are high-tech and in good repair, and we've got those as options, and I think we'll be able to get by until we get through some of these other projects. Mr. Brunner?
With that, with that being said, I did have a company look at it last week to give us an official quote, so we can look at the sound side, and then we do need to look at the sound background side in there at some point as well, but I did request a quote on the sound specifically last week.
And, you know, I was just wondering, because, you know, the, the other night at Baccolart, you know, we had the two speakers set up, and then I look up in the ceiling, there's speakers up there.
Yeah, I tell you, the way that, that sound bounces off that gym makes it very, very challenging, but I think that we, we can beat it with the, the right company and the right finances, it, it was a considerable amount when we first looked into it, and we just kind of prioritized around that, and like you see, that it is part of the overall arching plan to take care of that. We put a lot into the gym, with the floor being refinished, stripped down to bare wood, all, all the lines, everything put back on it, the new scoring table, the backdrops, we try to make sure that all the sports are getting the right attention that they need, and that gym has gone through a total transformation, I think that the sound system is the last piece of that puzzle.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Consider adding buses, C, consider adding buses 22 and 32 to surplus, the Board of Education and, and has done a great job of, of preparing for new buses, we have seven new buses that are on the way and being built, we've already received four buses up to this point, so our fleet is in a whole different world, and it allows us to be able to get rid of some of these old buses that are, are no longer in working order. We've kept buses just for parts, and it seems like we're getting to a point that we can actually breathe a little bit and have a reliable fleet. We're hoping to have, out of the 14 routes we have right now, I think 13 of them will have an AC bus for the first time, and hopefully we can actually, soon when those new buses come in, at least send kids home on an AC bus, that's a newer model. So the Board of Education has been, to be commended for setting the money aside and making it a priority, and you've done a great job with that, and you've transformed our bus fleet, so thank you for that, and we're looking forward to the delivery of those extra buses. So if you'll consider adding those two old ones to get them off our lot and make room for those new ones, we'd really appreciate that. Bids for the raising of Oak Grove, this was a real easy, because we only had one bid, and we're excited about that. If you don't know, the Oak, we're transforming the Ogglethorpe's, Old Ogglethorpe Square, revitalizing it, and that's, happens to be right where Oak Grove's cafeteria sits, so we're not taking down all of Oak Grove, just the unused cafeteria, since we've moved into the building, into a beautiful new cafeteria and kitchen. So we hope to begin that project as soon as possible, there's only one little small detail that we've got to take care of with making sure the electricity is disconnected in, in a way that we don't lose power to the rest of the building, but we hope to see the actual building being removed within the next two weeks, three weeks, so we're excited about that.
And this bid is everything, calling it off, everything?
Yes, I've asked for a re-submission of the actual quote that it will say on there to make sure that they follow all the guidelines in the RFP, that's a little bit vague for me, so they're going to put that, and then I'll attach the RFP to it, and then they'll be required to do everything in, that was stated in the RFP before we make our final payment. All right. E, Security Wall Project at MCA, well, the security wall project has begun today, if you know MCA, when you walk in, the first thing that you do when you're in that building, you're in the building, and if you've been there during lunch, you have direct access to all the students in the full building. So as a precaution, as a safety measure, we're going to put a security wall that is within the school, so from the end of the concession stand to the door to the front office, there'll be a wall that is exactly the same as the front entrance, so you're walking into a vestibule, so you are then directed into the front office, where you have to talk to somebody, and then you're buzzed into the school. We know that a glass wall is not going to stop an intruder who's really wanting to get in, but what it does is buys us critical time, if there's commotion, whether they're trying to get into the building, we have SROs, we have staff that is ready to, to make a move, and this is, any seconds that we can save could save lives, so we're really excited about the addition of this security wall, I think it's going to be classy, look good, and it's going to be something that is going to be a deterrent, because people are going to think twice, man, I got to go through a lot of measures to get into MCA. So construction has begun, the steel beam that goes across has been welded on and bolted on today, and tomorrow they'll cut the door into the office and then begin the actual details of putting the frame together and the glass in. We're hoping that it will be done within two weeks, I've been assured that about middle of next week, we should be able to go out there and see the first entrance into it, so we're excited about that. McIntosh County Middle School awning and fencing, as part of the Ogglethorpe revitalization, we've rerouted the fencing of the middle school so that it opens up that Ogglethorpe square to the community. Now, everybody, once those beautiful oak trees come to their fruition and are, are casting shade and a possible fountain in the middle, it'll be open to visitors, to just the community to come and enjoy what James Ogglethorpe had originally had in his concept of a community square to come together, and it's just fitting that it happens to be at a school, so we're excited about that, the fencing, the poles have gone in, some of the fence is coming around, two beautiful cantilever gates that will be really great for entrance and exit, so that project's coming along famously, I'm hoping for a completion of the gates and fencing within the week, and then the awning is a, at the discretion of supply chain, we're waiting on the materials to come in, but we've been assured that before school starts, students will be able to walk out the back of McIntosh County Middle School near the new cafeteria and the back of the school and have a covered walkway to get onto those buses. A rainstorm comes, they have somewhere safe to be, so that should be before school starts, and we're excited about that. Todd Grant Elementary School Gym Flooring, about three or four weeks ago, about four weeks ago, we had a flash flood, and I've been here for 22 years, and I've never seen a flash flood like this, it came up so quickly and so fast that it actually overtook the door of the gymnasium and it flooded the gym. I walked through it, and you, the actual floor was floating, I could go shh, shh, shh on a floating floor. I was really, really proud of our insurance company, GSBA came in, and they took care of business, one phone call, they had a company here, it's been certified, dried out, every tile taken out, hand cleaned and dried and dehumidified, and our gym's back into working order. We're working closely with the city to make sure that we don't run into this problem again, just a, a small tweak in, in some of the things that they can help us with, and we'll be back to, it was a circumstance thing, tide was up, all, all the negative equations came to fruition, but we're prepared for the next time, and a rainstorm, we won't be in that position again. Any questions on that? All right, sound system for the football stadium, again, as we move around, making sure that we get sound, we have beautiful sound for our softball, our baseball, and our football field will also enjoy a new sound system. The only thing they're waiting on is brackets for the actual speakers up there, and we'll be ready for the first game. The company that is doing it was the one who supplied the system for graduation, free of charge, and they came through because they knew that they didn't have the brackets, so thank you for, for that, Russi coordinating that. Any other questions? All right, goal area three, culture and climate, you know, I keep saying every month about COVID, and I'm proud to say that we don't have any COVID cases, and it was asked, when can we take this off the agenda? Well, due to us having CARES money and, and money that was specifically designated to help us through COVID, that we're required to report on the COVID situation in our county, and I'm, I'm pleased to announce that McIntosh, at this point, has no co, current COVID cases, but I always like to say that we have to do our due diligence and just continue with our general health and safety protocols. We're still washing hands, and we're still doing the things that we did in COVID, and it's helping with the flu, with the mumps, all the things that kids are getting, we could still help present, prevent by doing some of the things we did in COVID, so we're taking it seriously, and, and just as a reminder that approximately $150,000 was spent on, and a grant was given to us for high-tech dehumidifiers, I wouldn't say dehumidifiers, air purification systems for some of our high potential COVID classrooms, so that's going great, they've almost all been delivered out, and I think some of those teachers were really smiling and glad, glad to have them. Overnight field trip request, we have one overnight field trip request, and that's for Ben, Ms. Oliver, if you'll take a look at that, it's not for a while, but you'll be able to approve that on the work session, on the general session. All right.
All right, and?
Goal area four, community engagement, the MAST meeting with community members, Ms. Sheed, if you'll tell us a little bit about that meeting and how it went, and what that means, I'd appreciate that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so MAST is our McIntosh Advocating for Substance Free Tomorrow, and we meet every month, I, I meet with them as part of the school representative, school representative, and so last meeting, we just talked about Safety Day, how they did that at the high school before prom, and I think we got some good feedback about that, that students really like that, so we plan to do that again next year, of course, changing it up a bit, because they've already been through some of those programs or whatever, the little things that they visited, but we'll, we'll keep some of the must-haves and try to change it up just a little bit. Too Good for Drugs, that's, MAST sponsors that, we get a grant for that, and that's that, kind of the new say no to drugs curriculum that's in our elementary and middle school, and the kids like it because it's game-based and it's fun, the teachers like doing it, our counselors were, were doing it, and so now that we've had some shifts in counselors, we're going to train some more people, which MAST pays for all of that, or the Too Good for Drugs grant pays for all of that, but just to let you know that we'll be, we'll be training more people so that they can do that. They do put out those positive posters, so encouraging students not to drink or vape or do any kind of drugs, I know they've got spiral notebooks ordered for the middle school with some positive messaging in those, let's see, oh, there's a new grant out, and it deals with some of the mental health pieces, so we're going to invite Mr. McNair in and kind of see if we can get like a youth action group and see what we can do with that grant, and then they did discuss at our last meeting, come in to present to you, so at a board meeting, so they'd like to, I think, just kind of explain a little bit about the work that they do. Anyway, it's really neat, and, and everyone is welcome to come, any community member is welcome to come to our monthly meetings, especially if you have any experience working with, with, with drugs or substance abuse or any experience with that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the date of your next meeting?
Now, in the summer, it doesn't meet, so August 10th.
August the 10th, okay. Thank you.
And typically is at 4:00.
I'm really excited about number two, the meet and greet with Dr. Williams, sponsored by The Chamber, we'll have our new superintendent, Dr. Melissa Williams, out there to meet the public and get a chance to talk with her one-on-one, you'll see that she has a wealth of knowledge that she's going to bring to the system, and we're going to see some, some good things coming, I'm really excited about that, so come and join us on June 12th from 4 to 6 to meet the new superintendent.
And that will be here at the board office before our regular meeting? Okay, item seven is executive session to discuss personnel, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stradals, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Okay, we'll ask at this time if everyone would step out to the lobby. Okay, the McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel issues, could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Hewlett? Sorry. Okay, board comments, start down this end?
Wonderful graduation, coming off of a great year, everybody enjoy your summer, well, I guess we're not on TV tonight, so.
Not, not tonight, next week.
That's right.
We'll go back to our business meeting on TV.
Yep. Thank you.
Uh, ma'am, I don't have anything, thank you.
Ms. McDonald? Ms. McDonald?
I'd just like to thank those of you that are still here for supporting our community, our children, our staff and our school system. And we look forward to next year. Have a great summer.
Mr. McAlver?
Have a great summer. Excuse my voice.
Mr. Varon?
Want to say something real quick. I want to give a thanks to Mr. Mossel for, for doing what he did, stepping up so quickly and doing such an excellent job that you did as interim superintendent. You really did a fantastic job.
I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, sir. And I also would like to thank the parents, community members that came out. I did speak with Reverend Timmons and briefly for a moment, and Dr. Williams, we'll reach out to you when she gets back. She'll be back towards the end of the week. We actually have a conference in Savannah, so it may be the end of the week or the first of next week before she gets in touch with you. She may send you an email or something. But we do thank you for coming out. As I told Ms. Mangrum, a lot of times, things happen in the schools and we are the last to find out. And with this, this is how we found out. So, you know, so when you hear the board doesn't care, the board's not doing anything, reach out to us because nine times out of ten, we don't know. Our job is what you see here with the finances and the policy. We leave the day-to-day operations to the school because that's what we're supposed to do and, you know.
By law, we're required to.
Right, we are by law required to do that. And, you know, but we do appreciate y'all reaching out to us. You know, just keep us informed of what's going on and we can keep y'all better informed. But we will get to the bottom of this and see where we're going. And we do thank you all. And, and, you know, I see some of you, Kim, all the time, you know, we talk. But, you know, but again, we do thank you and our emails are posted on the website. I'm not sure if our phone numbers are on there, but, you know, I'm sure y'all can get that, but just keep us up what, you know, what y'all hear. Okay? Mr. Mossa?
Please.
And thank you, Mr. Mossa, for filling in. Dr. Williams will be back next Monday.
Really excited about Dr. Williams' beginning of her, her tenure here. She's going to do a great job. And I just wanted to say a big shout out to MCA for their hard work with graduation. We had a respectful, beautiful graduation.
Yes.
Highlighted our system. It was a, a beautiful event. They did a great job of making it a memory that those kids will never forget and neither will I. So thank you to MCA. Thank you, board, for allowing me the opportunity and look forward to the future.
Okay, all right, we're adjourned. Thank you.